Council acknowledge and pay respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as big traditional and original owners and continuing custodians of this land. All persons in attendance are advised that it's council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. The meeting will also be live streamed on council's YouTube channel. I want to start by honouring Hillcrest Prime School community, as we all agree with them during this heartbreaking time. We're in our rooms, to be honest. I'd like to ask you to stand, enjoy me, and observe me in its entirety. Thank you, everyone. Item one on the agenda is apologies, and we have a full complement of councils here receiving. Item two is declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest in any item on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to declare an interest in 3.2.2, and I'll be moving on to the other one. And I'll declare an interest in 5.8, if I'd like to stay to the discussion.
So what was the other one?
5.8.
Okay. You'll have to forgive me if I ask for recruits because it's a little difficult for old ladies like me to do it. Are there any others, Constable John?
Item 5.3, thank you.
Thank you. Any other declarations of interest?
Ma'am, if I'd like to make a statement in front of them, please.
You may, Constable Perry.
Okay. Ma'am, I wish to apologise to Mr. Robert Velacot for my question to him at the 2021 AGM held in November. It was not my intention, and I did not wish to treat him unfairly or cause him any offence or embarrassment, or to imply that he had personal advantage to gain by the motion put. Since the annual general meeting, Mr. Velacot has explained to me that he already has a parking concession, regardless of the outcome of the motion. I commend Mr. Velacot for his fairness in assisting to resolve this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Perry. Item 3.1 is confirmation of units. Do I have a move, please?
A move.
Constable Hollister and Constable Murphy, thank you. Constable Hollister, thank you, go ahead.
It's all in the minutes, doesn't it, right?
Thank you, Constable Murphy.
Be in the procedure, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Constable John, are your lights on?
Your lights.
Constable Hollister, the close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you, I'll put the motion. All eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 3.2.1 is responses to questions raised at prior meetings. Thank you, Constable Perry and Constable Murphy. Constable Perry, Murphy.
That's all on the agenda, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Constable Murphy.
Nothing further.
Any other comments, questions? Constable Hollister, your lights on. Thank you. Constable Perry, the close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you, Constable Melbourne. Item 3.2.2 is questions on notice from the public. Do I have a move or have that recommendation placed?
A move.
Thank you, Constable Perry, I'm a secondor.
Second.
Thank you, Constable Murphy, Constable Perry.
In the agenda and procedural, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Constable Murphy.
Yes, ma'am, nothing further.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Constable Perry, the close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you, I'll put the motion. All eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 3.2.3 is questions on notice from the public. You have the means of the gallery to ask questions. I would remind you to state your name and address, and you have the opportunity to offer questions.
Thank you, Madam Ma'am, running Russell, 225 Steel Street. But in regards to certain intentions at the moment, we will forego question time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Are there any other? Thank you for that consideration. Item 3.3 is questions on notice from councillors, so you don't have any access at point. We have one notice of motion, item 3.4.1. Constable Velacot, you're moving that motion.
So move, ma'am.
Thank you. Do I have a secondor?
I'll second it, ma'am.
Please, thank you. Go ahead, Constable.
Thank you, ma'am. We've got a living city that is going, as I call it, great guns. Real estate's booming with inquiries on land and housing from both interstate and interstate parties. So now's the time for us to beautify, get serious and beautify our city. It's very pleasing to note in the officer's comments that the Department of State Growth have recently commenced engagement with councils on the North West region in relation to the Gateway Project. Let's hope this project entrance via the Don is successful for funding. It's a lovely area, but I feel we can, in conjunction with others, make this entrance even nicer, something that makes people feel very welcome when they drive in. I would think that a simple addition of some deciduous trees planted on the land situated on the south-eastern and the western side of the roundabout would make a very nice entrance to Devonport. It'd be pretty easy to do and it wouldn't cost a lot of money. The roundabout itself can be improved with nice coloured thangs. Example, and I'm smiling when I say carpet roses, but carpet roses, I'm somewhat aware that we are not able to have tall plants in the centre of the roundabout or trees. And these roses are very easy to maintain, they're economical, and they're very hardy, so you can easily prune them. We could also have the wording 'Devonport or welcome' on a small stone wall in the centre of the roundabout, or something similar. I would like to see the community have their input into this project in whatever way our council officers see most effective. That is either a survey or a workshop situation. This new design will be with us for many years to come, so we need to make it pretty spectacular. And I know, or I'm hoping, that my colleagues will endorse this as well tonight. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Constable Velacot. Constable Perry is the secondor of the motion.
Thanks, ma'am. I support Constable Velacot's comments, and I think the officer's comments do align with the intent of the motion, so I'm fairly confident that the two will interlock and work its way through. And the intended beautification improvements will come about because of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Constable Alexia.
Thank you, Madam Ma'am. Now, before we get ready with the previous councillors' comments there, we do realise that we have some beautiful gateways in place to get the money, but there's definitely some more work that can be done to make it a lot more appealing for the tourists, especially in a beautiful city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Constable Ennis.
Thank you. I noticed travelling up and down the Bass Highway as I do on occasion, the entrance in Perth, they're doing a little bit of work there. It's partly done, but it looks quite simple, but very effective, and so something I'll notice lines would be great. Welcome people to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I will ask Constable Velacot to close the debate.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, everyone, for their comments that put them forward. I didn't forget the north-eastern and the western side, and the north-western side of the roundabout, going further into Devonport. But I'm very aware that, of course, businesses there that might not want large trees, but I think that can be done in a very professional way by us talking to those businesses, because it would be nice to continue the greening of Devonport with those, with some extra trees, whether they be evergreen or deciduous. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I will put the motion. All eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? The motion is carried unanimously, thank you. Need a motion to bring a later agenda item onto our agenda.
A second.
Constable Murphy and Constable John, and this later agenda item will come up at 5.9 along the Hillcrest Community Park. Is there any comments at this point about bringing more to the agenda?
I don't know what to say, ma'am.
Thank you, Constable John. Any other comments? Thank you, Constable Murphy, the close.
Consider it closed.
So this is seeking to bring this item onto the agenda. I'll ask for... What am I doing?
All eyes in your favour.
All eyes in favour.
Aye.
Any against? Motion is carried unanimously, thank you. Item four is planning authority matters, and I now announce that council intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Improvment Act of 1993 for the consideration of agenda item 4.1 and 4.2. Council's required by Regulation 8.3 of the Government Meeting Procedures, Regulations of 2015, to deal with items as a planning authority under the Luca 1993, Miss Penfry Manor. These items are to be dealt with at this meeting in its council's capacity as a planning authority. Item 4.1 is PA2021.0068, 39A North Fitzton Street and 34 Old Bagger Street in the Living Lot subdivision. Do I have a move, please?
A move. Second.
Constable Hollister and Constable Murphy. Thank you, Constable Hollister.
Thank you, Madam Ma'am. This is a planning application for a subdivision to Gary, which is in common with three, obviously on both sides. It's obvious that's very recommended by our neighbours for it to be approved with conditions, I would say, for the development. Nice to see it come up and keep carrying after they've been at some time. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Hollister. Constable Murphy?
Nothing further, ma'am. It's the recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I will ask Constable Hollister to close the debate, I think.
It's required.
Thank you, I'll put the motion. All eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The motion is carried unanimously. Item 4.2 is AM2021.03, 215 to 221 pounds. So move, Constable Perry, and secondor, Constable Murphy. Thank you, Constable Perry.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, this is just to certify an amendment to the rezoned land. That little piece of land has probably been problematic for residential development forever. It's just sort of stuck on the side by the Argus Inn, behind the Argus Inn, really. It's hard to imagine any serious residential, I guess, desire or appetite for someone to build something there. And it does note in the report that hypothetically it would be difficult to justify how the zone application guidelines could be satisfied if the site was to be rezoned to a gender residential zone, as the site is highly constrained due to the proximity of the Bass Highway and adjoining areas. And I think that pretty much encapsulates that little piece of land, and this would be a good use for it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Constable Murphy.
A common sense application, ma'am, to tidy up a dirty spot on the entrance into East End, so.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I'll ask Constable Perry to close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The motion is carried unanimously. Item five is reports. Item 5.1 is the tender reports for contract CP0219, the pedestrian route on Biggoraback Creek. Do I have a move, please?
A move.
Second. Constable Melbourne and Constable John. Constable Melbourne.
Thank you, ma'am. It's exciting to see this go ahead and coming on the budgets, especially since the in that area. So I look forward to seeing the plans.
Thank you. Constable John.
It certainly makes sense for us to ensure that it's such a large growing area that's developed so well in the last few years. Obviously, we've got more people living there. Now, this gives everybody better access around the area. It's a wonderful subdivisions out there, and a lot of children, they're going to get to school safely and completely understand we want the safety of the body at present. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Constable Ennis?
Yeah, I think it's good, it's about connecting communities, and I'm happy with this.
Thank you. Constable Perry?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, this project's been a while coming, there's a lot of, I guess, lobbying from residents in that particular part of town, and it will serve quite a worthwhile purpose. It will connect Wood Rising to Sprate itself, that behind the football ground and the netball court, and various other sporting infrastructure along Sprate Main Road. It will have the effect of taking some traffic off the main road during school hours, which would certainly assist traffic flow out of that area. So credit to the people that have kept coming to council with this, that have now had to get their bridge built. It will be a very good piece of infrastructure, as I said, and I hope everyone supports it. Thank you.
Thank you. Constable Hollister?
Thank you. I think this is an important connection, because it allows all the people that are now moving into that area, a shorter access and a safer access into the sporting precinct and the shops that are at the upper stall. So I think it's a very good tactic.
Thank you. Do you have a question? Thank you, ma'am.
Still?
Okay. No, that's fine. Thank you. Constable Melbourne, close.
Thanks, everyone, for your comments. I know I've been living out there for seven years now, and the traffic on those main roads increased exponentially in that time, so I think this definitely will contribute to the safety of the children who walk in the school and to sports as well, especially the gymnastics out there now, so it's really drawing a huge crowd to the Mason Park precinct. So thank you, everybody, for your support. Mr. request.
Thank you. I will put the motion on, eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 5.2 is the Devonport Sports Infrastructure Master Plan 2035. They need the authorization place.
A move.
A second.
Constable Murphy, Constable Melbourne. Constable Murphy.
Thank you, ma'am. Very lengthy and detailed report. Obviously, we are going to have to be ambitious in moving forward, at least for the next 15 or more years and potentially longer. The report makes one thing very clear in relation to what council's responsibility is, and that being ensuring we have the opportunity to provide accessible sport for all. Having said that, I think there's been a good opportunity there for the community to get involved, provide us with some more feedback, and we can proceed further down the planning stage. May I, ma'am?
Thank you, Constable Murphy. Constable Melbourne.
Thank you. This is a great process to be involved in. I'd like to just endorse Carl Bryant, who was the driving force behind this, and just remind that the interest for this was the Devonport Gymnastics Club, who did a great job to fundraise for their building, and then when they were ready to go, kind of scrambled around to find a spot for it. That spot has caused a few issues in that area with parking and movement and traffic and all those things. So hopefully, this master plan will alleviate those things in the future, and it's already proved its point and proved its worth in seeing clubs come together to try and find a way for in the future, which is exactly what we want them to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Constable John?
I just wanted to say, you know, it's probably been talked about for so many years over the different aspects, and everyone's had the same idea, but to bring it together like we have and with the right people has certainly worked, and I think it's great to see so many responses on the survey. People are certainly thinking about how we're going to the future, how better we see the whole thing working together, and it's nice to see so many sporting organisations collaborating like this. And I think we've come out with a really good plan, and I think it's going to be very interesting to see how it all develops. Thank you.
Thank you. Constable Perry?
Thanks, ma'am. Just like to commend everyone involved in getting to this point. It's going to be a very difficult, complicated proposition. It's going to lead us to the point where we need to decide where the best place is for a sporting precinct, and there are two or three options, or three options that are in our of at the moment. Firstly, that's the first point, and secondly, how it's going to be funded. But the body of work that's going into this is phenomenal and shouldn't be underestimated. Full credit to that group, and let's just keep going through the process, and maybe those other two answers will follow our lap. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Constable Hollister?
This is very important from the point of view that it allows some of these projects to be shovel-ready, because it's funding normally comes from state and federal government, plus rate players as well. So if the projects aren't shovel-ready, well, they haven't got a...
Thank you.
...what to recommend.
Constable Alexia?
Thank you, Madam Ma'am. All the previous councillors' comments there, I did actually work with the sports and infrastructure group of Carl Bryant, who a lot of work has gone into it, a lot of dedication, a lot of time, a lot of thought process as well. In our room at the moment, we've got Constable Perry and Constable... Ennis, charity. Two really sporting legends in the room here at the moment as well, and they can probably see this master plan at the moment is going to come to a full field, because over the years, over the time, you would see a lot of changes when you guys were playing sport as young kids to where we are right now. How much the sports have changed, we're having women's sports being so huge, so changing all the facilities from just men's change rooms to women's change rooms, and also to facilitate handicap people as well. So I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Constable Ennis?
Thank you. I think... Oh, thank you. Too kind. It's running now. Six time guy. I will say, one of the real keys to livability of a city and for the community is the sporting assets that are available, and for us to come up with a plan that will make our, give our city a chance of having some of the really best facilities, will naturally enhance the amount of people who would like to come and live here, and make it the best place for people who currently live here as we go forward. So our whole city's probably, apart from the gymnastics that was in, is in need of renewal in many ways, so with this is a good way to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Constable Murphy, the close.
Thank you, ma'am. It is worth noting, this is potentially a significant investment in the community, some over the tune of close to $80 million, and I think we're going to book it. Providing opportunities for all people, not just our residents who come and visit the city, to actively participate in sport in quality venues is a significant opportunity. I think it also needs to be understood that if the main or primary driver of this is to try and achieve centres of excellence, that all the sporting bodies behind, whose desire is to see those here, will need to put their hand in the pocket to provide that, because it's not council's role to necessarily provide centres of excellence for sporting facilities, it's more about inclusiveness for sporting opportunities for all. So having said that, we consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The motion is carried unanimously. Item five point three, that's the gentleman, thank you. Item five point three is coastal pathway after the recommendation of the place.
So moved. Second.
That's the Holster and that's the Murphy, that's the Holster.
This is the last two sections of the coastal pathway that's in the difficult municipal building. I think this is going to be a great thing for our residents, also for visitors. So everything else is in the report there. Have you furthered away?
Thank you. That's the Murphy.
And thank you, Mayor. It is worth noting that there is almost a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar overrun, which is to be expected with the cost of rising materials and labor costs, et cetera, in achieving the end result by agreeing with councillor Holster that the coastal pathway is a very exciting part of not only just linking Devonport to the Trope, Devonport to Turner's Beach and Devonport to Holston with the introduction potentially of electric scooters and the popularity of electric bikes. It does provide the opportunity for more people to access that particular pathway in a safe manner. I think due to the diligence and the management of our financial resources in the very trying period, it shouldn't have too much of a detrimental impact on our bottom line. And it's something that we need to meet as well.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? That's the Ennis.
I think the vision of all those people involved in this coastal pathway project will prove in the future to be an absolute boon for our area along, all along the north west. There'll be people travelling just to go on the pathway. And we'll all benefit from that, little businesses along the way, accommodation, et cetera. People will just want to ride that pathway and that's for visitors and others alike. It just forms a safe part of getting around with your family, which is fantastic. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? That's the Holster to close today.
Yes, the access that's coming from this will be really good, especially out of the dom heads. Let's see if we can get over to the dom heads itself. And they can go up over the top and go down on Paradise Beach. Perfect swing. Have you furthered away?
I will put the motion on, I suppose, please say on.
Aye, aye.
Are there any against? The motion is carried unanimously. It's going to be moving on. That's the gentleman. Thank you. Thank you. That's the gentleman. That's the one. Item five point four is a straight trade policy. There is a recommendation.
So moved.
Thank you. That's the Murphy and that's the gentleman. That's the Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just another common sense approach by council in relation to making things more efficient before we clearly what the name there is out there in the market. So you can expect it one July twenty twenty-two, which brings us in line with other areas around the state. Nothing else to add there.
Thank you. That's the Alexson.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I fully support this. The function that's come into place by another clause provided here is just a reflection of how the times have changed with district trading, as we know. Over the years, how things have changed with street training has been... If you go back ten years ago, it wouldn't have been so much of a big deal. But now we see quite a fair bit, so there's more happening. So it does make sense to update the policy to where it is at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? That's the Murphy to close today.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion on, I suppose, please say on.
Aye, aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item five point five is the long term strategic asset management plan for two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and thirty-one.
So moved.
That's the Murphy. That's the gentleman. Thank you, councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, another common sense approach from council. The municipal has nearly six hundred and eighty million dollars worth of assets and managing their renewal and ongoing infrastructure advancements is integral and having a clear direction and clear mechanism to follow that is very important. At least it then doesn't provide the opportunity for an ad hoc approach in relation to asset management moving forward. It's a very good, clear plan, so another one pretty simple that we need to endorse.
Thank you. That's the Perry.
Thanks, Mayor. I concur with councillor Murphy. There's an enormous body of work goes into managing an asset base as significant as council has. You can't be underestimated how much work that takes. And should we get any of that stuff wrong, then, you know, it will be difficult to overcome a bad mistake. So they have to go on the job at all times and they sure are. And I will thank the team for getting it to where it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I'll ask councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion on, I suppose, please say on.
Aye, aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item five point six is the hip to plastic, no parking concession. There are two options for recommendations there. I will ask for a second, please.
So moved.
Option.
Option one.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Do I have a second there?
Have it.
That's the gentleman. That's the Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. This has obviously been brought up through two AGMs now, numerous workshops and discussions. It's time to put it to bed. I think this is a fair and reasonable approach. Council will provide the necessary parking concession to residents and the owners for them to demonstrate that they've been paying rates here in Devonport for fifty years. I don't think that's unfair and I think if anything, it's equitable.
That's the gentleman.
Thank you. Thanks, councillor Murphy. I'm totally agree with what you've just said. And I certainly think that now that this has been brought up twice in two AGMs over the last few years, it's certainly time for us to look at democracy rules, I believe. Both were put through by the majority of the people that are sitting in our AGM and I'd like to respect that. And I think that this is something that we can seriously look at. And I think it's quite easy to look after the people who pay pay rates for fifty years to us. And I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Again, thank you. Are there any other comments? That's the Holster.
I'm going to support this. I think the issues that people are going to find in trying to prove that they've had paid rates for fifty years is going to be quite challenging and it'll be interesting to see how many people are able to actually possess the requirements required for the parking. Have you furthered away?
That's the one, move on. That's a little more quick. That's the one.
Thank you. I'm still going to vote against this. I believe that it is not yet at all and that it will be a challenge for people to prove their eligibility. It will cause more issues for our frontline workers downstairs in trying to explain that. And we've already had reports that they have been in difficult situations and there has been abuse from people who think that it is already a set up system. So I just don't think it's fair or equitable. I think we have gone through the democratic process and we have looked at this option and we have been showing the figures already. And I think that we have shown that democracy has happened and with everybody's knowledge, shown that this isn't a process that is fair for the city to go towards.
Thank you. That's the Perry.
Thanks, Mayor. I acknowledge councillor Millburn's comments and in fact, in part agree with most of them. But I think we owe it to our community to give this a trial. I am conscious of the pressure that's going to put on our frontline staff. I'm very mindful of that and we need to have a strategy in place for that. The expectation that the pass would be granted without demonstrating that it's legitimate is going to cause some anxiety, I understand that. But I think we're at this juncture where we need to give it a shot because there is an appetite for it in the community, how much some in the community. So it's incumbent on us to give it a shot and see how it lands. It's a twelve month trial. And if it doesn't work in that twelve month and becomes a nuisance around council's neck or difficult for council's frontline staff and all those other things that were spoken about in two or three workshops, then we could quite rightly demonstrate that we're not proceeding past twelve months. But let's give it a try and see where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I'm going to vote against that. I hear what my colleagues are saying, but I think this is going to cause so much more angst in the community for those trying to work out whether they're eligible or not. As far as the recognition goes, we decided a few years ago to acknowledge our rate payers that have paid rates for fifty years because that's quite an achievement. And that's great for us to have people staying in the city. We do that with the lunch and I think that that is successful. As it says in our background notes on page fifty-nine, council already provides parking permits since January two thousand and eleven. And that includes the age, disability and service pensions, of which there are only three thousand receiving this benefit. So I think that even though, you know, you say, do it now or we'll have a look in twelve months, I'm just wondering whether it's worth that, the time and the angst for both the staff and the rug players trying to work out whether they're eligible for this fifty year parking concession. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That's the Alexson.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'll be supporting option one. I think it's, it has been on the table quite a fair few times. We've had lengthy discussions regarding to and from. But I think moving forward, at least with giving our option, better for the right payers if they can prove that they've been paying rates for fifty years and they'll be eligible. So I'll probably support option one. Thank you.
That's the Ennis.
Thank you. I think provided that clear explanation and sort of particularly of the qualification to receive this benefit would need to be put out for everyone to understand. And I think that if we do it well, which will take away some of the angst as to whether you're qualifying or not. So we'll see. We'll see. Hopefully, hopefully it can happen.
Please move, Mayor.
Yes, that's the Holster.
Question to General Manager. Is it true, I'm putting you on the spot, that we still have some problems with our existing pensioner parking from the point of view that there's some discrimination there? From the point of view that somebody can have a pension pass for ten, fifteen years, whatever, and then they can come and care of the partner and then they don't, they don't want their pay eligible? So...
Point of order, Mayor. Does that actually have anything to do with the motion's implementation here from a discussion perspective? I'll leave that up to you.
Probably not. But it certainly shows that there is a disparity, I guess. But it's not directly related to this motion, but point is like councillor Holster, thank you. Got it right with this one. Are there any other comments, questions? I can't support the motion. I just believe that the challenges are too much, that it will cause too much of this angst for those who are trying to figure out how to do it and also been reflecting on our staff for being from the other end of it. I appreciate the sentiment, but I really don't believe that the benefits will outweigh the challenges that will be ahead of us. And I think that is just obviously the way it's going to go. I will ask councillor Murphy to close today.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank your councils for their contributions. I think it's just worth noting that, as I stated previously, that it has now been to two AGMs and twice it's been brought to council. And as I stated earlier, a number of workshops and advice and a lot of work by council officers and providing us with the information to actually make the decision. The only clear way forward is providing that opportunity. And I understand that it may be difficult, but it's going to be up to the individual to make the choice as to whether they're going to put the effort into ensuring whether they're paying rate for fifty years and obtain that information to demonstrate that they qualify for this particular scheme. And therefore, they'll proceed. If someone determines it's two owners and the effort doesn't outweigh the reward, well, they'll choose not to pursue. And I think councillor Ennis is correct. I think with the proper advertising material and promotion from council, which we do well at times, I don't think that there are too many issues. I'll consider it closed.
Thank you. I will put the motion. I will ask for a show of hands if you can accept this procedure. All eyes in favor, please raise your hand. Councillor Murphy, councillor Holster, councillor Alexson, councillor Ennis, councillor John, councillor Perry and those against. Councillor Lyle, councillor Lyle, councillor Walker, the motion is carried. Thank you very much. Item five point seven is the Access and Enclosure Working Board for our Dens of the Foundation for on page sixty-three.
So moved.
That's the Murphy.
Second.
That's the Lyle. That's the Murphy.
It's all there in your court, Mayor. It's really good to hear that sort of generously offered to commit this very, very important movement.
Thank you, councillor Lyle.
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion on, I suppose, please say on.
Aye, aye.
Are there any against? The motion is carried unanimously. Item five point eight, and now we know that councillor Millburn has declared an interest in removing the main board for the day. It is the Spratton Scouts Association's request for land. Do I have a move or a disagree action?
So moved.
That's the Murphy.
I'll second that.
That's the Perry. That's the Murphy.
Thanks, Mayor. This recommendation, again, another common sense approach. I think it's integral to the Excalibur itself that we do provide the opportunity or incremental support to assist the Scouts organisation, taking into consideration the challenges of that base.
Thank you. Councillor Perry.
Thanks, Mayor. I support councillor Murphy's comments. From time to time, councils request or get asked for requests of land in certain areas of our city. And this request is a good fit for that particular piece of land. They've already been out in that part of the world in recent years and it's a good opportunity for us to help the Scouts Association continue their long tenure. And it just seems like a perfect fit for me. Now, in the recommendation, there are a couple of conditions, which, you know, it's up to the pub to meet those and I'm sure they will. But as far as fit for purpose goes, I think this makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the gentleman.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Starting funds for the Scouts, if they can end up with a new hall, it'd be wonderful for them. It's so good to see an organisation like this still continuing after all those years. And to know that we can be a small part in keeping it continuing is just a wonderful thing. Mason Park's becoming such a great spot out there for so many children from so many different aspects. And I think it's just a given that we can find that land and allow them to continue on doing what they do so well. and allow them to continue on doing what they do so well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you. I did put an interest in this because my daughter is actually enjoying scouts and thinks it is wonderful and has a lovely time and has gained many, many skills from going to scouts every week. I'm just thought of bringing it up though. I'm completely supportive of whatever choice is made, but just like to put on the table that we've found some really good synergies with groups working together. And there's another sporting club at Mainstone Park that might actually be another good home for the scouts and that being the Pine Club as well, which I also have conflict with. But the, I'm suggesting it because it is already a fenced facility. There are amenities there already and it's possible that perhaps that the infrastructure could be built to it much cheaper and then work with Pine Club to pass some costs in some areas and work together. So just putting that on the table, that there are discussions that could be had there in the future if necessary.
I'm sure that's been more, I'll just step to the back there.
Thank you Mayor. I'm more than happy to support this motion tonight. Groups such as the scouts and girl guides and any group like sporting organisations, we should be there to help simply because the organisations do shape our children for the future. And in lots of cases, of course, they learn life skills that they don't learn at home and discipline. So there's lots of good things going for these organisations. So as I said, I'm happy to support this and all the best to the club and I hope it all comes off as planned. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone other comments? Oh, sorry, councillor Alexia?
Thank you very much Mayor. It is nice to see that we have the scouts in the house if not. And we're having the support as much as we can, as you can hear from the councillors over the years. And I have my eye to all those boys at the Spratton Home School. The scouts have always been involved with helping out at school, especially with their fair and sprouting and it's a great cause that they do, so I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll ask councillor Murphy to close.
Thank you Mayor. Taking into consideration for a brand new bridge going across the Great Creek. Hopefully the scout organisation out there, the Spratton Scouts will see an increase in numbers. Good luck. Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 5.9 is the Late and Gender Origin Report on the Daniel Hook Community Public Fund. And the motion is on the screen. Do you have a move?
So moved.
Councillor Darman, councillor Murphy, councillor Darman?
Thank you. Yeah, I've just taken a moment to read this as it's a late and gender item. And I thank the general manager for putting this together. And the late notice, which we all understand, under the circumstances, it's very necessary. I certainly think it's a small part that we can play in putting some money towards this wonderful fund that's being put together originally by young Zoe Smith, who's incredible. I know that there's some angst out there at the moment. But I'll face the plan about what is going to happen to these funds and how they're going to be administered. And I think we need to do something about that and clear the air as quickly as possible and get some clarity going. Because there is angst out there and it's a shame because we want everyone to understand everyone's trying to do the right thing. I know in the past when the fires happened on the mainland and there was a wonderful comedian, a GoFundMe painter. She wanted the money to go to a certain specific idea. That didn't happen because of the rulings. So I'm sure we're very aware of all that and we're going to try and do the right thing and make sure that the reason why Zoe put it together is the reason why we're going to be making sure it goes to the right places and goes to the families and doesn't get lost in governance and bureaucracy. So I think we just need to reassure the general public out there that it's all meant to be as is. So I certainly think that this is very appropriate and I appreciate the fact that we're doing that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Ennis?
It just, my comment is, just to follow along with councillor Darman about the Facebook, you know, the angst that might happen. One of the good things about that is that allows people to, from many other places, easily to access and donate. It hasn't been easier in the past and so that way, that's one of the good things about it. This crowdsourcing, crowdfunding type deal that goes. I must admit, I'm quite, I'm a lot, feel a lot more comfortable knowing that it's going to be administered by a group of people to make it sure it hits the right places. So well done and I'm very supportive of the council making this donation on behalf of the rest of the people in the city.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis, councillor Perry?
Thanks Mayor. I actually agree with councillor Ennis and pretty much stole most of my thoughts. I've got great confidence in the board that's been assembled to administer the funds. So I don't think there will be any issues there. The cause is just, we all know what the cause is. It's incredibly sad, but you know, I've got confidence that we can, with the mayor on the board, that those funds will be administered in fair and frank fashion. So I'm glad with that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess just to reiterate, that my side are actually going to do the funds. The funds aren't coming to council. And that Zoe Smith, this part of that, maybe to go down for the service. I guess that's a little bit sad at that point. Councillor Alexia?
Thank you very much Mayor. Thank you for that information as well just now. It was very tragic, very tragic. Congratulations to the general manager for organising this public fund and getting this all organized. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Darman to close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 6.1 is what Jacksonburg in session says is the last.
So moved. Second.
Oh, who said so? Councillor Perry, thank you. And councillor Murphy, what I mentioned last week, thank you. Councillor Perry?
Just a fair representation of what we did at that workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Be in the procedure.
Any other comments? Councillor Murphy to close. No, thank you. Councillor Perry to close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried unanimously. Item 6.2 is the Mayor's Notary Report for this last year.
So moved.
Councillor Murblen, thank you.
Second.
Councillor Perry, no, councillor Murphy, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Just like to thank you Mayor for being so compassionate over the last few days and representing us with... I can't, I'm not aware of the thank you.
Councillor Perry?
Digging the compassion, I think, towards the whole council and all hard labor.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Are there any other comments? Councillor Perry, you're right.
Oh, sorry.
Councillor Ennis?
Thank you Mayor. Yes, I too endorse those comments. I've said it privately, but I've had a lot of people say to me, "A great job you've done", so thank you on behalf of all of us.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll put this out the door. It's a whole part that I've got to handle. I appreciate it. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councillor Murblen to close. Thank you. Councillor Perry, I'll put the motion. All eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 6.3 is the General Manager's Report. Lovely. Close.
So moved.
Councillor Darman, councillor Murphy, councillor Darman?
Yes, I was, Jane's always very, very busy. Just want to say how pleased I was on behalf of the mayor and obviously council. I was there with the chairman at the feeling announcement. Just, I'm quite flabbergasted about the amount of money that is going into this area, let alone the Davenport area in the region. And it's just a dream come true really, especially for being on the East Davenport side, which I'm sure the mayor is very proud of too. And it's just going to be an amazing development and certainly again, another reason why people are going to be wanting to come to this area. So I'm very, very pleased with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Darman, councillor Murphy?
May you succeed.
Thank you. Other any other comments, questions? I would like to acknowledge the general manager and his term for the support that they've given me the other last few days in particular. It's very amazing and I really appreciate it. Councillor Darman to close. Councillor Darman to close.
I certainly agree with your sentiment there. I understand how trying these last, this last week has been for everybody involved and certainly wishes everybody to have a really loving break as well if they can. Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 6.4 is the Infrastructure and Work Support. Motion, please.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy, do I have a second there?
May I second?
Councillor Alexia, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you Mayor. There are three items there that are noted for expenditure. They're all in budget, so again, any words noted really?
Thank you. Councillor Alexia?
I'll be further moving.
Councillor Holst?
The proposed resounding of the Davenport Shogun's Sargent. Is that what's it saying now? What's it supposed to go to?
Sorry, you made it a current sign of his community purpose and the charges for a special area implanting.
Councillor Darman?
Thank you Mayor. Just a couple of things. Very proud to see that we've got the recycling things happening in the business districts, which is just wonderful. And also that we've got solar panel installation happening in the parental arts centre, which is just wonderful. We're certainly getting up there with all the environmentally friendly ideas that I've always wanted to do. Everything takes time, but I'm very proud to see those things happening in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yes, just...
Oh, one part of the councillor's, yes?
One part of them. I'm really pleased and I'm sure a lot of people have been holding on to this, the Horsehead Prenton lot. Starting, so that's great news.
Thank you for that contribution. Councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 6.5 is the Development and Health Services Report. Do you have a move, please?
So moved.
Councillor Alexia, thank you. A second there?
Second.
Councillor Murphy, councillor Alexia?
Thank you very much Mayor. It's all, all there. I'm kind of... She's got, no, it's just that, well, I just wanted to make a comment on the COVID situation and I know the council keeps updating all the time what's happening and where we're at. So it's great to keep up the updates so we're all updated where we are with COVID as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
May you succeed, Mayor.
Thank you. Other any comments, questions? Councillor Perry?
I just like that they're more still going gang buses. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you councillor Perry. Item 5.1, councillor Alexia, to close the debate.
Consider it closed, Mayor.
I'll put the motion. All eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? The motion is carried unanimously. Item 7 is 1623, maybe 74. We should put that in there perhaps at this point. Before it's ready. And item 8 is to move into, motion to move into call session, please.
So moved.
Councillor Lytton?
Second.
Councillor Murphy? Any comments? Councillor Murphy?
Nothing to add.
Councillor Murphy?
Will you succeed?
I'll put the motion. All eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? The motion is carried unanimously. And that first, the open part of this moving to a close. And 1632. Thank you everyone in the gallery. Make sure everyone's safe.